I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 12th meeting of the Reinbeck Village Board. First item on the agenda is our county legislator, Joel Tyner. Joel?
Mr. Mayor. So, the first thing is, I wanted to invite everybody watching, everybody in the room. I'm doing another one of my monthly forums for the public on Tuesday, March 26th at 5:30 PM, just across the way at Reinbeck Town Hall. You're all invited. Tuesday, March 26th, 5:30, Reinbeck Town Hall, just to hear input, ask me questions, whatever. That's number one. Number two is, only once every 10 years does the solid waste management plan for Dutchess County come around, and so, the public comment is only being accepted on that for another day or two. And you can pretty easily find that on the county website if you go to the county planning department website, if you go to the county division of solid waste. And unfortunately, incineration is being promoted still too much, and incineration is being prolonged. And I've done a lot of research on this over the last four or five years. Garbage isn't garbage if you source separate it. It goes into the clean dozen, the woods, the metals, the glass, the polymers, the plastics, plant debris, food waste, et cetera. We're sitting on about $20 million worth of stuff, materials, that we could be making money off of, instead of losing a lot of money and poisoning our air with incineration. So, if you go to noburn.org, no-burn.org, there's a lot of information there. If you go to dutchisdemocracy.blogspot.com, but there's only about 48 hours left to make a comment on the solid waste management plan for the county. You can email solidwastmgmt@dutchessny.gov. I was one of the few people questioning, over the last week, the expenditure of $1 million on the Fish Gill baseball stadium. Poughkeepsie Journal did a Speak Up poll question on Thursday. Friday, they printed the results. Something like 82 people said yes, go spend the $1 million, and about 435 people said no. So by a 5 to 1 ratio, people who participated in the poll said, "We don't want to spend $1 million." So myself and a few other individuals sort of took hard positions on that. The Poughkeepsie Journal reported that seven years ago, the county comptroller did an audit, that the first 12 years of stadium life, the receipts received were insufficient to pay interest on the construction debt. And then, when the reporter asked county officials to say, you know, what years the stadium was profitable, historical analysis, that would be very time-consuming. So, I found that troubling. I was not able to support the million, because everything's been decimated. There's no money for anything. There's no YMCA, no YWCA, no Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Cornell Cooperative Extension's been decimated, the county youth bureau project term program, and property taxes and sales taxes are still too high. So, that troubled me, along with another $900,000 for the enterprise content management system. I've found that folks in Reinbeck and Clinton are fairly fiscal conservatives, so that troubled me to spend about $2 million on those two things last night. I would also let you know that if you missed the Poughkeepsie Journal editorial from a couple days ago, this is Sunshine Week, and it's all about public access to government information, and trying to get away from closed-door government. For six or seven weeks now, I've been trying to get information about the records going on with the purchasing policies with the Dutchess County Department of Public Works. I invite you to call me on that at 876-2488, or 453-2105, because I have not been getting the records that I've asked for, about, you know, where, you know, exactly what companies are item for, the coal patch, the gravel, the blacktop, et cetera. There's also, only about a week or so left to comment on the Central Hudson Fortis deal. County comptroller, Jim Coughlin, who lives in Reinbeck, pointed out that we taxpayers spent about $791,000 last year on Central Hudson, just to heat and light the county buildings. Kevin Cahill, the assemblyman for Reinbeck, has pointed out that in other deals, we should be having an $85 million customer and community benefits, not just $50 million in customer and community benefits. It's 1-800-335-2120. That's the number for the New York State Public Service Commission. Or you can email secretary@dps.ny.gov. Also, NAFTA comes into effect now. We're dealing with a Canadian company. As Cahill's pointed out, we've had record Central Hudson rate increases over the last five years. I know it's a big impact on the Dutchess County budget and taxpayers. I believe you folks here in the village of Reinbeck government have to pay Central Hudson, you know, I think that whatever we can do to hold things down. Right now, they're only, under the current terms of the deal, they're only talking about no rate hikes for another year, and keeping jobs for another two years. And the Poughkeepsie Journal says that's not good enough. Kevin Cahill says that's not good enough. I don't think that's good enough either. I actually got Ben Trout, county legislator for Reddick, to sign on to a letter with me on that. So, again, I'm at 876-2488 on that, and call the New York State Public Service Commission on that. Last but not least, there's been all this stuff in the papers about the New York Safe Act. The way that it went down in Albany was not good. You know, the vote was last night in the county legislature. It was atrocious. But, the man who sat over there, Terry Gibson, I think he's been on the right track over the last month or two. You don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. Terry has been pointing out in the state senate, you know, the vampire voting bill, things shouldn't be rushed through like that. You know, between 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM, there shouldn't be deliberations on that. I would just urge people, I'm not gonna, you know, this is the village of Reinbeck board meeting, so I'm not gonna take much more of your time. I'll just say one thing. I didn't really know exactly what was in the New York Safe Act, until I started doing some research. There's a lot of good things in it. And if you want me to stand here and talk to you more about five or 10 minutes, I will. But, I think you have better things to do. I have to hustle over to the Clinton Town, to the Clinton Town board meeting. If you go to nyagv.org, or bradycampaign.org, or dutchisdemocracy.blogspot.com, you can see why I voted the way I did. And again, the way that it went through, just really atrocious. But to me, you don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. I also experienced a gun tragedy in my own family 30 years ago, so guns kill. People, I'm all about the Second Amendment. You should be able to hunt trapped fish, defend yourself. I don't think you need AR-15 or an AK-47 to do that. But I'm at 876-2488, and if you agree or disagree, whatever, come raise hell with me. Tuesday, March 26th, 5:30 PM, Reinbeck Town Hall. Thank you for your patience, guys. I gotta run to the Clinton Town board meeting.
Thanks, Joel.
Yep.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing that was held over from last month. It's regarding an amendment to the village code, section 10915, all-night parking, also known as the snow ordinance. And the suggested change was from 12:01 AM until, it is at 12:01 AM until 6:00 AM, and the change was from 12:01 AM until 8:00 AM. So, at this point, I need a motion to reopen the public hearing, please. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? So voted? Pete?
Yep. I don't want to take this opportunity just to go over a few things. On behalf of the police department, and working with the highway department, I had made this request to the village, the village board, to make a change to the ordinance. After speaking with the Chamber of Commerce, Conley Krukschenk, and many members in the village businesses, and the community members, I've come to the realization that, I did a little research, and all throughout Dutchess County, I researched all the villages in Dutchess County, and I ran through some of them. Just let me give you some of what they have for times. Village of Red Hook's 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Town of Red Hook's 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Village Utilities is 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. City of Kingston has no parking 24 hours after a snow emergency is declared. Village of Millbrook is 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Town of Fish Gill is 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM. Village of Fish Gill, 1:00 AM to 7:00 AM. City of Beacon is 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Village of Abundus Falls is 12:00 AM to 7:00 AM, and the Village of Milton is 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Town of Pleasant Valley has no parking on their local streets from November 1st to April 15th. So basically, what I'm gonna say here is, I'm looking for the village board to amend the amendment. I'm gonna ask that we just leave the law the way it is, 10915, from November 15th to March 30th. Leave it from midnight to 6:00 AM. That's what I have.
Okay.
Alright. Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Comments from the public? Jack?
John Vericchio, I would just quickly say that I support what you just heard, leave the ordinance the way it is, because it would impact businesses, at least the Catholic Church. I don't know about other denominations, but I don't see the need to change it. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jack. Anybody else? Bill?
William McGann, Village of Red Hook, I support.
Village of Reinbeck.
I mean, it's late.
Did you move?
No, not yet. No, I'm still here. Forty years, I'm still here. No, I support Sergeant Dunn's motion proposal. There's a reason why it's 6:00 AM in all those villages. They have churches in those villages, and you have Sunday morning mass or services in most of those villages. And there's a reason, because some of them are at 7:00 AM or 8:00 AM, and it would impact the parking for the people that are attending church services. That's our main interest. Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. Lewis?
I would support, excuse me, Louis Rugi. I'd like to support the officer's change in that suggestion. I didn't make the first public hearing, and I'm not aware of.
Where did I?
Okay. But, you know, we've, over the times, and you know, my father started out in a little wine store down across from the Beekman Arms, and when he moved up where we are now, they told him that he was way out of town and shouldn't go. Well, he should've gone further. Anyhow, we do open at 6:00, and, you know, we've been restricted to the area that we are, and we've tried to live within it. We've tried to do the right things for the village. We lease the lot behind the church, and we can use it when they're not. But we still have to use the street. And at 6 o'clock in the morning, till 8 o'clock, we're moving things around so that we can get to work, and so that maybe our employees have to park there, or they park in the thing. So it would really be a hardship for us in that respect. And I do respect the fact that, you know, it's a problem with plowing and so forth, but we try to help out all we can, and when there's a snowstorm, we have the vehicles off the street, and we try to help out. So, but, this man has helped me a lot here, if you would go along with the suggestion. But I thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Louis. Anybody else? There's no further comments from the public, then I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? So voted. Comments from the board? Brad, you got anything to say?
No. I was really prepared to, you know, vote against the change anyway, so.
Okay. No, I want to keep it the same way it is.
Aye.
I want to keep it the same way.
You know, I had had some discussions with Pete, and I said my concerns, of course, were for the business community. And, you know, there's a lot of factors that play into it. You have establishments such as Pete's and Brett Alone and the Bagel Shop, that open early in the morning. Businesses such as Rugi's. You know, I'm an early riser, and I'm out early, and I see the vehicles that are on the streets, and I see activity at Louis's. I mean, those guys are there at 5:30 in the morning, getting the garage fired up, and moving vehicles around. I'm at the Bagel Shop a lot of mornings when they open, and their employees are already there. Have been there for a half an hour or so getting ready. Pete's, those people are in there at 5:00 or 5:30 in the morning. So, you know, I don't feel we have a major problem in the village. Luckily, we've had a couple of fairly mild winters here, and we haven't had a lot of snow activity. On years when there's a lot of snowstorms, it can be a headache. But, you know, it's something that we have to manage, and something that we have to deal with. So, you know, my intent was to recommend that we stick with the 12:00 AM until 6:00 AM. So, with that said, we're done, right? We don't have to do anything.
Yeah, we'll take action on it.
Right. Okay. Thank you, everybody that came and commented. Next item on the agenda, department reports. Wastewater. Brandt? You can all stay the rest of the meeting.
Highway Department reports coming up, too.
What? No, I'm just kidding. We had 3 million gallons of wastewater treated for February, 88,400 gallons of sludge processed, 13,535 pounds of sludge processed, 23.8 cubic yards of sludge processed. The sludge press broke, but we repaired it to the tune of about $733. The reason why I point that out is because it's looking more and more prudent that we are embarking on replacing it. We're keeping it going. To that end, we just got the shop drawings approved, and the new sludge press has been ordered. So we're gonna try to push that, because that's the long lead time item. We had the scheduled values approved from Standard Construction Corp., which is basically all the benchmarks that they're gonna go through, and have a value attached to them. So, aside from that, let's see, what else do I have? I think that's about it.
Okay. Thanks, Brandt.
You're welcome.
Water Department. Heinz?
We treated about 9,322,000 gallons this month.
9 million, you mean, right?
Come again?
9 million, you mean.
9 million. I said 9,000. I meant 9 million. I'm sorry. We replaced about 80 of these large bolts that hold some of the pumping system together, right at the place where the highest pressure occurs. These bolts are about 1 inch in diameter, and they were all corroded. We had to take them all out and get ready for our painting project that is gonna hopefully start pretty soon. As far as the water distribution system is concerned, the South Parsonage Main Truck Line is essentially completed, but needed to finish. We need to still finish the blacktop concrete, and the work around the bridge, you know, recreating it, and so on. I received a number of complaints on that, and I had just asked Nancy Clark to get ahold with Bucky Coons to get a date when we're going to have that work completed. It should be very soon. It's warm enough to do the work now.
That's a problem with the blacktop.
Yeah, blacktop is open, right.
In the meantime, we just have to keep filling the hole.
Yeah, and we do, but unfortunately, they last about two days, you know, they gets blown out again.
We did it Monday.
You did it. Yeah, you did. We had, we had a water main break yesterday, and on Violet Place, 6-inch water main broke, and we had to cut a section out, about 3 feet of it. And in the process of shutting off the water to the line, we also broke off two of the valves that connected the, that shut off the water to that system. Both of them in the North Park region, one of them in North Park and Violet Place, and the other one, North Park and South Parsonage Streets. And that particular area is also where we want to replace the fire hydrant. So, we're gonna look into, to do all of this at the same time, because you dig a hole, you know, you may as well do the other one. The bad part is that there is two utility poles, right, within about 3 feet of it. So, we need to look at this. I just gave you, I made some pictures of that, and I want to just show them to you. This is, this is the break, and the break always seems to be occurring on the underside of the bridge. With that, I would say, there's a lot of tension there, probably something bearing down, and bends. The upper part is in compression, the other one, the bottom is in tension. And this is what the break looks like. And when we took the pipe out, you may want to pass this on here, this does not look very pretty. This, that's a 6-inch pipe that morphed into a 4-inch pipe at the time, and there's about 1 inch of growth on there. And that's the reason why I show you all that, because we seem to see that a lot. Other items that I've worked on is, I worked, reworked the village emergency, the water plant emergency response plan. And I'm just about done with it, but Pat was, Pat Coon, that is, was working on that, and I think she's gonna be immobilized for a while. And I'm wondering if we can get a couple hours of comp time, and Lisa to finish that. It is mostly formatting and so on, and I'm, I want to put it in the PDF form, so we may want to put this on our website. Prior to that, I'm gonna give you a copy of that when it's done, and also to you, to take a look, look at that, if that is something you want to do.
I would just, before it's put on the website, I would just check and make sure that there's some things in there that possibly need to remain confidential.
Yes, and I took some of them out because of that. But I'd like, before we do that, I'm just gonna distribute a copy of that, and you can all look through that, and also you.
I printed out your draft by accident. I thought it was about 3 pages long.
No, that's 30 pages. That's quite, that's quite a long piece of property.
Quite a document.
It's quite a document, yeah. Secondly, I'm in the process of doing some capital maintenance and capital improvement projects. The first one that is gonna come about is painting the basement of the water plant. And that is gonna come in three flavors. The first one is to paint all the existing pipes. The second part of it, and that's gonna be a bit that way, is the surrounding, the inside, the walls only, not the floor, and not the ceilings. And the third one is, we have a low lift station, which is aside from the main water plant, close to the Hudson River. And there, that was actually built not long ago, like 8 or 10 years ago. However, there are some section of that, that is fairly old pipe, and particularly on the fasteners, the bolts and the nuts, they start to corrode. And so I wanted to have that looked at, and bid also. We may not do that, but I want to, you know, while we have the painters there, I want them to look at. I had, I've been continuing interviewing a number of vendors of that, mainly because I did not know the scope and the cost of this thing. We had that bid once in 1,099 or 2,000 in that timeframe, and the cost at that time was $24,000 to paint, paint the pipes, well, clean the pipes and paint them. And my sense is that this cost has gone up probably two or threefold at this point. So, I had asked Nancy Clark, our engineer, to, and I had talked to you that before, to give me an estimate of her cost, to send out bid packages, since this is over, probably gonna run over $50,000. I think we have to go for a public bidding process, and I, you know, I cannot do that by myself. I think I need, I need some help on that. And she has come back to me with a cost of $12,400 to put that bidding package together. And she has detailed what the cost is, and it is not just, you know, putting the package together, but it's also to control the quality of the paint job, or the coating of the parts, and so on. And I'm here tonight to get approval to do that. I have a meeting set up for the 19th site visit with Nancy and Tom, and Jim said he is gonna come to look at exactly what we want to do. I need to do that now, because I have a, we have a problem with the weather. And the water gets too cold, as it is now, or in the fall, or the, late fall, or early winter, the pipes condensate, there's condensation on the pipes, and they trip. So we have to keep it dry in order to clean it up and paint, and so on. So, this work needs to start not later than the early part of June, and has to be finished by September timeframe. So, I'd like to get your approval here to get into a contract with Erdman Anthony, to start going for a public bidding on this, on this project.
I'm not prepared to take any action yet, because I haven't had a chance to read the document in its entirety.
Yes, I just got it.
Certainly, you know, I got it today, certainly, but I can be prepared by tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
We have a meeting tomorrow night, or Thursday night.
Or Thursday night.
Thursday night.
Yeah, we don't have to do tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay. And I think I have, I thought, it was a closed envelope, but I got the document here, so we can.
Well, I have the document. I just haven't had a chance to read it.
Oh, okay. No, but I, I think, did you get the document?
Yeah, I got one, too.
You got one, too, okay. So, okay, so that is part, that is that. I'm also working on a variable frequency drives for high-service pumps. And the reason we do that is twofold. Number one, we have terrible corrosion and leakage going on on the control valves that shut the access to the pump on and off. And we also have issues with the amount of electricity that we're using to do that. I had extensive conversations with Central Hudson to find out exactly how they go about charging us for the power. And of course, I had mentioned it before, there's two ways they charge us. Number one, they charge us for the size of the pipe, I mean, the electricity, you know, the voltage and so on, and the amount of current that is sent to us. And the other one, which they don't really control, and just do a pass-through, is the actual power consumed, the volt amperage pairs that we're consuming. It turns out, in the distribution network, what Central Hudson does, is they check the current flow and the voltage, the current flow essentially every 15 minutes of the day. And they take the high value of that to determine, you know, what they're gonna charge us for the, for the distribution. So, one of the reasons I want to do this, or looking at wanting to do this, is to reduce the amount of initial surge that is in the line when you first turn the motor on. These are 100 horsepower motor, it runs at 440 or 450 volts, and the initial surge to turn that thing on is like 1,100 amps, which is a lot, a lot of power. Okay? And we can substantially reduce this now. So, we get hit, number one, from a distribution point of view, because of the high amperage use, and then also in the power consumption part of it, for the high amperage use. And so, as far as the generation of the power is concerned, there are different companies who charge different prices for kilowatt hour. I know what Central Hudson's numbers are. I have, you know, two or three years of data on that, on monthly data. I have data for a particular month of some of the other, Agway is one of them, other companies that sell power. And just by having one cent a kilowatt hour less, you know, we are using in the water plant, about 40,000 kilowatt hours a month, it's $400. Okay? I just happened to sign your vouchers this morning, and you actually use more power than we use in the water plant. You know, I mean, you use closer, you know, we use typically about 5, 5 and 1/2 thousand.
They say water doesn't run out of pill.
Well, we're trying to push it, you know? So, so I'm sure.
Earth goes uphill, too.
Yeah, I'm sure there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some savings. This is a monthly bill I'm talking about, and I think yours is monthly also. So I'm sure there's savings all around here. So I want to, I want to continue working on that. I started discussing with a, with a number of people who do this kind of variable frequency drives, and I haven't come up with a common denominator yet. So I still have a number of people to go through. I interviewed three people so far. I have one or two more to go. And I'm gonna keep you apprised of what is going on here. Next item is, I had preliminary discussions, very preliminary, like 15, 20 minutes this morning with our village engineer, and have about an hour, hour and a half telephone call with her tomorrow, to talk about a comprehensive plan, an engineering plan for, for the village, and Village of Reinbeck. And she tells me that they actually have somebody there, who, graduate student, who can be of assistance to us. She thinks that it is important that we have kind of an integrated plan to do that. And the integrated plan means, you know, the water distribution system, the drainage and road improvement. And that drainage, I mean, new and existing, you know, we have areas that are not being drained at all, and road improvements. And we have already done the sidewalks. I mean, we have pretty good mapping of what is going on here. So, I want to have a discussion with her of what it takes to do that. I am willing, assuming the board agrees with that, to start funding the initial part of it, because I know that we have issues, or going to have issues with our water supply at some point in time, and I want to forestall that. One of the things in the water department we need to do is to really measure the water pressure, dynamic water pressure in, over many areas in the village. We have a lot of 4-inch lines there. We have a lot of 6-inch lines, we just saw here in this picture here, that more of it get down to 2-inch lines. And, but in order to really understand what is going on in these, in these pipes outside of, you know, just changing them, I think what I want to do, and I've asked. I think what I want to do and I've asked Tom Wallbank to start looking for a piece of equipment that we can put on one side of a, at one hydrant and then measure the, the, the pressure drop when we open up another part, another hydrant nearby and so on. And I think we need to do that kind of a mapping all, all through the, through the village. So, I have, I'm gonna have these kind of discussions with, with Nancy. And I thought maybe when I get to a point where it is useful for the board here to, to partake, I'm gonna schedule a workshop or something like that so we can think about what we want to do. And, and one other reason I think we need to do this is if we want to go for grant money at some point and probably soon, we gotta have some kind of an understanding of what we want to do. So, the discussion I had with, with the engineers is that I want to see something that is sort of layered, where we can take things out, you know, like on a shelf, have a, take a, take a, some, some kind of assessment out and then, then wrap it up with, with a grant application. So, so when, when something, when money becomes available somewhere, we can, we can do that. If you have no objections to that, I, I'd like to get into a conversation with the, with the engineer shortly.
Is there cost associated?
There is no cost with that initial, but there will be a cost when we talk about.
Talk all you want.
Talk about, well, okay. Well, one, one of the things I want to say also is that we have, we, the most, a lot of, I mostly have in the last year done a lot of mapping of the infrastructure of the village. And we have actually for the water department a fairly good idea of where, where the pipes are, where the valves are, where the hydrants are, and, and, and the quality there are. However, this is not a substitute for an engineering plan if you go out for grant writing. You know, you need to have something, something that is, is, is sanctioned and blessed by, by, by an engineer. So, okay, I will talk to her and we'll come back and, and would, would you be amenable to, to a workshop at some time to have her explain?
No, I think it's a little premature to talk about that yet because based on our meeting tomorrow night too, we have to figure out what we're gonna do, so.
Yes, yeah.
Let's, let's kinda like absorb the information and then we'll decide how we're gonna progress.
Thanks real quick. Do you, those variable speed pumps, when did you plan on doing that in?
Certainly not before September.
And it's coming fiscal year?
It's going to be in this coming fiscal year.
Because then we'll see if that helps with the water leaks.
Well, with what?
If we have a consistent pressure, then it's gonna help with the water leak.
Yeah, the, you mean the, the breakage of the pipes? Is that what you mean? The breakage of the pipes to a large extent is, is also seasonal.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the ground heaves and so on.
Sure.
And, and, yeah, no, the reason the, the variable speed pumps is not gonna happen before that is because I gotta get the, the pipes and, and the downstairs cleaned up first and painted, okay? And that's gonna take till probably September.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm not done yet. I have a lot, a bit more to go.
Clock's ticking.
I am requesting the, the start initial funding of the, the various projects that we discussed in, in a week or two weeks ago, capital projects. And at, at a time we, we said that we would, that I need, I wanna put some money in, into a number of items. One of them is to clean, paint and re, of repairing of the pump house. I'd like, do I need to get an, for each one of these, a, I'm gonna transfer money from my fund balance, from my water.
You should have, you should have a proposal of what you want to do for each one of the board members so that they can review it and get an understanding of exactly what you wanna do. So, for example, you're gonna take money from the fund balance to fund this project. This is how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah, well, I don't know what.
To fund this project, you know, that's what you should have.
Well, I, I have that, Jim, and that is part of our, of plan, our twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen plan.
Okay, so then that would be approved during our budget process?
We did essentially approve the concept. We did not approve the transfer of the dollars.
But it doesn't become effective until the budget goes into effect on June first.
Uh, that's correct.
Right.
Yeah. So, so.
So, when we approve the budget, then everything can happen. But we, you know, we're still in the development of the budget process.
Okay, so now I'm a little bit in the quandary because I, I want to get this paint project going. Now, I have money to do that. It's still from the leftover from the South Parson Street. So, I probably have to use.
But if you're, if you're planning on funding the paint project in calendar year two thousand thirteen, fourteen?
Yeah.
If that's how you're planning it?
I, I am doing that, except for the engineering, engineering effort, which is twelve thousand dollars, which, which becomes too soon.
And that money would come, is coming from where?
That, that would be coming from, it would come from whatever's left over from the South Parson Street. Or we'd have to transfer it from.
So, it's money that's already there?
It's money that's already there.
So, that's just a matter of juggling. But if it's, if it's a capital project that's being funded in the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget, that money's not there yet.
It's not there. No, I would have to transfer it.
Well, you can't really transfer it because it's not funded until two thousand thirteen, fourteen. You could transfer it, but you can't expend it because.
No, I can't expend it. That's correct. Okay, so, enough said.
Yes. This is where you wanna set up different lines in your, in your capital?
Yeah, I have already, we have already done that. We just have not put any money into it.
Okay.
Okay. And that, as Jim said, that's gonna.
Those lines aren't gonna be there till June first.
First, yeah. Last thing is I visited the Bucipsi Water Treatment Facility in right in back of the Marist College. And that facility is about twenty times the size of ours. And they do about three and a half billion gallons per year and nine million gallons per month. They do have seventeen full-time employees there. They have twenty, twenty-four seven coverage. They have a capital plan that's about twenty million dollars and that is on top of huge expenditures that they had already in the past. They built a new plant which is almost twenty million dollars with, with interest and so on. They are separated from the distribution plant. They have actually, the, the plant is by itself and then there's three distribution items. One of them is the town, one is, is the, the city. And then there's a third one which is an independent one and I believe part of that is IBM, where they get water from, from these guys. And so, it was interesting to see the size of the equipment there and what, what they're doing and how they deal with, with, with problems. And one of the good things about going there is to, to get the sense of who they work with, who are the, the people that are supporting them and, and so on. So, so the networking I thought was, was an interesting part. And that is the, our finished water, by the way, seems to be just a little bit better. But that is because the water, the raw water that gets into Bucipsi is quite a lot worse than, than what we have up here, from their data. But anyway, so that is it for me and I'm sorry for taking so long.
All right. Thank you. All right, next is fire department. Call volume for the month, so February. We had twenty-one EMS calls in the town, twenty-two in the village for a total of forty-three. We had eleven fire calls in the town and ten in the village for a total of twenty-one. Motor vehicle accidents, one in the town and two in the village for a total of three. So, there were a total of thirty-three calls in the town and thirty-four in the village or sixty-seven total calls for the month. So, year to date, the end of February, we have seventy-four calls in the town, sixty-eight in the village or a hundred and forty-two calls total. I have a meeting with at least the chief tomorrow night, perhaps some of the other officers. And hopefully I'm gonna nail down the rest of their budget lines and be able to discuss those with you guys on Thursday. We have a new member of the fire department to vote in, Casey Van Vorus. He's a newly elected member and they're looking for the board to approve him as a firefighter. I'll make a motion to approve Casey Van Vorus. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. That's it for fire department. Street department, Howie?
Yep. Okay, the guys have been doing the maintenance on the trucks and the back hose, repairing leaks and, and the lights. They've been doing tree trimming along the roadside, road sides and the streets. They've also been doing street sign repairs, plowing and salting as needed as, as the storms come in. And the trucks and sanders have been working trouble-free, knock on wood. During the last storm, there were a lot of cars left on the streets overnight, making it hard to plow and salt.
One thing, I wanna, I wanna question on that. Do we know what time this was? Because I know they were out at about eight-thirty at night. And if there's cars on the streets, the snow ordinance doesn't take effect till midnight, so.
Right. I'll talk to Mike about that. But they also do have the ability to call the sheriffs if they, if there are like three o'clock in the morning?
Well, what they need, what they should do is if it's becoming a big headache is contact me. And then I can try and take some action.
Okay.
But to not do anything, you know, to not say anything to anybody.
It is the first time I heard about it, really, during my report, yeah. They've been cold patching the potholes. Basins were cleared of ice and snow for the water runoff. And Mike says that any lawn damage done during the plowing will be repaired as soon as the weather permits. That's it for the highway department.
And what I'd like to say, just to say it for the camera, is that, you know, if somebody has a car and it is snowing, even if it's prior to midnight, it would behoove you to get your car off the street so that the plows can get through. People's cooperation would be greatly appreciated. That's it, Howie?
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because we talked about this, but I keep forgetting to mention it. The owner of Superior Sanitation calls me and he thinks that we should, because the water, the septic tank is filling up with groundwater presumably. He suggested that we camera the waistline going into it and he's got a camera and see if there's any crack in any of the fittings or any of the pipe going into the tank and just see if that's where the, where it's coming in because he suspected that might be it. And he quoted me four hundred dollars.
You're talking at the highway garage?
Yeah. It wouldn't require board action. I just keep forgetting to do anything about it, so.
Well, at one point there was talk about infiltration at the lid, that it wasn't being sealed properly.
And he doesn't think that's it. He, he just recommended we do it just to see if that's it. Because we're cleaning that thing out frequently, so.
This is a.
Superior Sanitation. From what, Armenia or Stanfordville?
I think they're from Pine Plains.
Pine Plains?
Yeah.
Can we get free cleaning of the, of the tank for, if you, you hire him to do that?
For four hundred dollars.
Why not?
You got free beer?
Yeah.
So, it sounded like a good idea to me. Because if it's cracked, there's groundwater getting in there somewhere.
Right.
He doesn't think it's a.
Jeff Decker says it's not, nothing to do with the tank. They're, they're all sealed.
Right, and that's what he thinks. So, let's camera it.
What do you wanna do?
Okay, well, gonna make a motion to do that or?
No, that's, well, it's less than five hundred dollars too.
I'd like to do it then.
Who's gonna coordinate?
I'll call him.
Okay.
That's it, Howie?
Yeah, just, well, I just wanna say today I was looking at the storm drains during, during the rain and it appears that the Garden Street area is, is fixed. I don't know if it's permanent, but there was no flooding over there. We had a lot of rain today.
Yeah, when I came back this afternoon, I was looking around, it was okay.
Yeah, rugies was.
Chestnut Street down past my house was okay. The water was going through the culvert there. You know, what we need to keep in mind too is that the ground's not frozen, so.
Right.
You know, that's definitely helping our situation here. The ground was frozen, we would, definitely wouldn't be getting absorption and it could be a problem. We don't have a lot of snow left either, so that's helping. So, we'll just have to monitor it, you know? Speaking of, speaking of Chestnut Street down by my house, is there any more movement, any more conversations to fall on?
No, we should call him now.
What we're gonna plan to do there?
Now that it's almost spring, we should call him.
Yeah, we oughta try and get something going for, uh, uh, once the, the weather straightens up, you know? Figure out what we're gonna do there.
Okay. I'll call him too.
You know, get, get an idea from him on the size of the pipe he's suggesting to go onto the road.
Now they're saying thirty inch.
Is that gonna work downstream?
That's what they think.
We're not putting it into smaller pipe, are we? That's, that's my concern.
That'll be going to the open ditch.
No, we're, we're talking Chestnut Street into where Gotchalk's property is. Is that all buried in the ground?
Right.
So, that would all be thirty except for the viaducts, which.
Well, the, the pipes under Gotchalk's property aren't thirty inch, are they?
No, no. Nobody wants to replace all that.
Oh, you're talking about replacing all of that? I thought we were just talking about Chestnut Street.
Under both streets because he looked at under Star and he said there was like, like wood frame support underneath. It's just, he recommended we just redo that also.
Oh, okay. I didn't understand. I thought we were just talking about going underneath Chestnut Street.
No.
All right. Well, let's get a proposal together.
Okay.
All right. You know, and I guess the thing we have to be concerned here with is the bidding requirements, you know? If you, he can give us a rough cost estimate, you know, then we're gonna have to determine whether we gotta go out to bid on it.
If we can get low enough to do an RFP instead of a public bidding.
Yeah.
And we're still getting competitive pricing, so it's not like we're.
So, let's, you know, spring's right around the corner. We can get working on it.
Yeah, he's, he's been working on it. He was gonna go back and run transit line or something?
Lisa said something about somebody called yesterday, right? He was over there walking around in somebody's yard.
Okay. That's a good sign.
Well, I was there today, I was there today walking around. Dog came running out after me.
She was concerned that we were gonna do something and not let them know.
Yeah, that's probably the same lady I talked to today, yes.
Diane?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next item's planning and zoning. Everybody's got Bob's report. I just got it, so I didn't really get a chance to read it. All right, one minute, I've seen. Anybody have any questions that need to be followed up on? No?
No. I, I have good. The only thing with zoning is the fairgrounds and the, the fence code. I know we're, we're frozen the budget right now, so.
We should probably look to set up some type of workshop in April.
After. After the election.
April.
April.
Yeah, we don't know if we're all gonna be here after the election.
Election, election day's next Tuesday.
No, I meant after, after we have a, after we have a new, after we have another member on the board.
You wanna pick a date now or?
You think we'll be done with budgets by then?
Yeah. Okay. We should be done with budget in a couple more weeks. We're waiting on you.
I'm ready. I was ready, I was ready last time, but then Frank kept talking.
We got off track, we got, we got off track last, last week and that will not happen this Thursday.
We gotta go through.
I'm bringing this hammer with me.
We're gonna go through lines on Thursday night.
Okay.
All right, a regular board meeting would be on the ninth.
What about the sixteenth?
Sixteenth, no, I'm in a night class.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth, I'm in a night class. On the twenty-third, I'm in a night class. Let's go for, how about the twenty-fourth of April, Wednesday night?
Okay.
Sound good?
Yes.
Now, we're gonna tackle both, the fence code and the fairgrounds zoning?
Well, what we should be prepared to do is have information available for the public that they can peruse prior to the workshop.
We have drafts for both.
Right.
Right. From, from the steering committee and from our committee.
Have it available so that the public can look at it. And we could do a public workshop the first night with both items on the agenda. All right, and then decide how we're gonna progress from there. If we feel that it's too bulky to do both at the same time, we could split, try splitting them up.
Okay. Okay.
And it's gonna be six o'clock?
No, seven o'clock.
Seven would be better, I think.
Yeah.
If you want to talk about this?
No, I was gonna talk about it in our budget.
Budget?
Yeah. Let me explain it. We got a, we got an estimate for overhead doors for the, for the back part of the fire department back here. Now, I put money away in this year's budget, this current budget, to get this done. But we only got one estimate, so I wanted to get at least one more.
I got two.
I tried to get two.
The money's already in the budget, then go ahead and get the estimates, and we can just make a decision.
Okay.
Okay. All right, police and court? Any questions?
Wayne? Okay, I'd like to bring you up to date a little bit on where we are at present and tell you a little bit about where we're going in the future. The exterior of the building is pretty much done, as, as you obviously are aware of, but the, the South Gable Lane, in regard to deciding and trim, is not finished yet, and that is as a result of material scenario. We're waiting for some, for some material to get, to get here to finish that. And that'll be done. Then the exterior of the building is totally done. Interior, the interiors, I'm sorry?
From porch detail?
Yeah.
Still waiting?
Yeah. The columns are gonna be here tomorrow, so they'll be installed next week. We had a little bit of a lead time there in regard, because we changed from a raised panel to the, to the square columns. Interior scenario is, all the painting is done pretty much inside. Everything is primed, the ceilings are done, most of the painting is done inside. The cabinets for the training room were delivered today. Interior doors will be delivered tomorrow. So, um, everything else is, is well underway in regard to the interior scenario. Ceramic tile is gonna be installed in the bathrooms, beginning of the end of this week. The VCT tile, which is the linoleum tile, which is throughout the interior of the building, is scheduled for the beginning of next week. And then it's interior trim, and the electricians are presently working on the interior fixtures. The mechanical contractor is involved right now with completing the duck work in the basement. He has some scenarios there in regard to some of the plumbing fixtures had to be changed in order to accommodate the duck work. So that's gonna be done, like, within the next couple of days. So, um, at present, we're looking at a final inspection for the twenty-third, twenty-fourth of April. So everything is going well. We've had a couple of issues in regard to the exterior sheathing, which I've been, had a lot of conversations with our engineer. There were some issues in regard to the application of the sheathing, and that is a scenario that I'm working very closely with our engineer and the architect and our general contractor. And that's an issue that we're gonna deal with when we come with a final inspection. And I'll give you some more information on that as we go forward. There is a change order, one more change order, sorry to say, that we had to deal with within the last couple of weeks. And that is the, we had an expansion tank that had to be added to the system. As a result of the prevention of a backflow scenario in our water system, we had to include an expansion tank that was not in the spec. That's gonna cost us three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-six cents. I'm gonna give you a copy of the change order. This is a scenario that happened as a result of, when we, we installed the water system, we realized that we had a backflow scenario that we had to deal with. And as a result of that, an expansion tank was necessitated. It was not in the spec. So as a result of that, it's a change order that's, we're gonna be responsible for, so I'm gonna have to ask the board to approve this three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-six cents.
I move that we approve the three hundred and eleven dollar and twenty-six, uh, expense request from Ackerman to do the backflow.
Does your second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Still voting?
Yeah, this is already installed, so I'm glad you approved it.
Take it out.
I actually, you know, I think this is the end of the change orders. I can't really envision another scenario that we're gonna have in regard to change orders. I just will make mention that I reviewed the change orders that we've had to date, and they, they end up to be about sixteen thousand dollars, which, you know, sounds like a lot of money, but when you consider a nine hundred thousand dollar project, we're looking at about little over one percent of a scenario in regard to change orders, which, quite frankly-
Half of it was for the architect, right?
I beg your pardon?
Half of it was for the architect?
Yeah, I think we did a wonderful job.
Change, change orders have to do with the construction.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, these are scenarios that you don't envision as you go through the construction process. You know, the scenarios that, you know, the shoring was huge. And that was ten thousand dollars, so, I mean, that, that was a scenario that obviously nobody anticipated. We had a footprint that entailed approximately a twelve-foot scenario on the South Ember Building, and we had a soil situation there that we had obviously no knowledge, that we had a, uh, an unsecure situation there that we had to deal with. And that was ten thousand dollars, which actually represents literally probably seventy-five percent of our change orders, and the rest of it was minimal. So, I, I think we did a, a really, really great job in curtailing over expenditures in regard to this project, and, and I think that a lot of that has to do with communication between our architect and myself and, and our engineer, who, you know, I think did a fabulous job in, in regard to curtailing those scenarios, so. When you consider, you know, a little about, little over one percent of the total price of this thing, it's, uh, I think we did a great job in that regard. So, um, you know, as we go forward, you know, we're, we're gonna monitor the interior scenario. Pete Dunn is very involved with a lot of the scenarios that are gonna go on with the finished product. So I think that's gonna go real smooth, I don't really see any other scenarios here that we're gonna have to deal with. I have met with the LP gas people, I just wanna bring you up to date on that. I had mentioned to you that we had made the decision to go with three one-hundred-pound cylinders on the south side of the garage. And that was as a result of, again, the, the small footprint that we're dealing with here. If we go with hundred-pound cylinders, we can put them next to the building, and again, they're on the south side of the structure. If we go to anything larger than that, then we, then we have a, a space commitment that we have to go twenty-five feet from the building, we don't have the room to do that. We are gonna incorporate the emergency generator for the police building with the emergency generator for this building. So the LP gas requirements are gonna be encompassed both with the new building and this building. So we're gonna increase the capacity of our LP gas in regard to the emergency generators, and we've got that all worked out. I will say that one of the things that I think we missed in the budget scenario was the security and the phone scenario. Which, you know, we can look back at this and say. But the security system and the phone system was, uh,
Much more comprehensive than-
Much more comprehensive, because of codes, code requirements. I mean, it wasn't something that, you know, we're, we're being over exorbitant about in, in installing. It was a scenario that state stipulates that we have to put this stuff in. And as a result of that, it cost us a little bit more money than we anticipated budget-wise.
We still have to get the tower, too, and the tower's, what, ninety-five hundred dollars, I think?
Right. However, I, I will say that, you know, the movement of the tower, and again, again, anticipating these scenarios, we were under the impression initially that we're gonna just move the, the tower off of the existing trailer and put it on the new police station. Well, unfortunately, that isn't exactly the way it happened. However, we, we are gonna be credited for the value of the tower that we have on, on the trailer, so it's not a total loss. They are gonna be able to give us a credit and utilize it in this, in a different scenario. But, again, that was another scenario that we kinda missed the boat on a little bit.
So Wayne, how much we got left over?
I'm working at, I'm working on the numbers now. Uh, I'm, I'm not quite there yet, I'm, I'm still trying to get some feedback back about from my comm co. And I wanna sit down with the mayor and go over the numbers. But I, I can briefly tell you quickly-
That's okay.
Okay. I, I'm really not there yet. There's a lot of, there's a couple of things that I need to deal with in regard to the, the security system. And then we have some additional scenarios in regard to Phil's, our, our architect. We've gone over budget a little bit in that regard, and we're not really sure where we're gonna be there. We haven't anticipated an amount, but quite frankly, I think that's been a little bit overestimated. So, um, if you, if you can give me a couple more days, I, I'd like to sit down with the mayor and just go over those figures, and I'll have a, a real good synopsis of where we are. Okay? Any questions from everybody? Everybody happy?
It's looking good.
I mean, I know Brent and I have had the opportunity to go through things, is anybody on the board?
I went through there yesterday.
Oh, good.
Looks nice.
Last time I was in there, they had just about, they were just finishing up all of the spackling, so I haven't been in since they put paint on.
I just saw, not paint, but I saw the prime, they would do a lot of priming.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I tell you, the inside of this building is really nice. And I, and I've heard nothing but great things about everybody's feelings about the exterior.
Everybody loves the exterior.
You know, it's great.
I'll be doing a great job selecting colors, Wayne.
And I, you know, the wonderful thing is that our, our most important neighbor, Joy, is like hugely, she feels so wonderful that this is happening, and she, she loves it, so.
Joy and I stand out on the street on Sundays and go, get it done, get it done.
Right. Right. Yeah, I, I really think this is gonna be a, a state-of-the-art facility, and it's, uh, it's come together well. It's been a, a huge experience for me, uh, working with all the people to get it done, and very, very proud of the whole scenario, and you should be, too.
Just to, uh, kind of brief everybody on what I'm anticipating, once we know, okay, this is our, let's say, ex-inhabitant date, you know, of course, we wanna have some type of dedication ceremony, but then Pete is also planning on doing a, a day for law enforcement agencies to come and see the station and, you know, that type of thing. So as soon as we know more information about when those two functions will happen, I'll let all you guys know so that you can be here. All right?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
Anybody else have anything, questions, anything on police and court? Dog report. This is the January dog report. No dogs picked up. A few complaints taken care of about barking dogs, and some were running at large, late in people's yards. These people have been warned and are now being monitored. No charges have been issued at this time. Winter is a time of complaint about dogs being left out too long in the cold, so far, but we haven't had this on a wide scale. Uh, committee reports, tree commission, Howie? Oh, wait a minute, I got one more thing on the police and court, I forgot. Annually, Dutchess County sends me from the Department of Emergency Response what's called a designation of emergency interim successors, meaning if something happens to me, what the chain of command is gonna be from that point on. So I need three names to put on this form. So Howard Trout goes on as deputy mayor. And then who wants to be next?
The youngest guy.
What about the retired guy?
Bring up the rear.
Lisa, you have all their addresses, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I guess I gotta sign it. All right. Go ahead, Howie, tree commission.
Okay, um, we had our tree commission meeting last Tuesday. And again, our tree planting, our spring tree planting is gonna be Saturday, April twentieth, please write that down, we need some help. We usually meet in the mini park around nine o'clock, but we'll have that information to you next month, so that's Saturday, April twentieth. It only takes about three hours, we work from about nine to twelve, we plant about twenty to twenty-four trees. This Saturday, which you won't see this until next, till it's over, but, um, this Saturday is gonna be a tree pruning workshop at two PM at the mini park. Tree commission's gonna sponsor that. And, um, as again, again I said, you won't be able, you won't know about it till it's over, but anyway, we do, we do try to inform the public on how to take proper care of their trees. The Tree City Presentation Award is gonna be March twenty-eighth in Albany. That's an annual, annual thing, we, we try to maintain our Tree City status, and we've done it again this year. Uh, there was one pruning request at Seventeen Manor Road, but we got the request the day of the, um, the board, our, our tree commission meeting, so we really didn't take a look at that yet, so. Hopefully, next month, we'll have a, we'll have a decision on that, to ask the board, to see what they wanna do. That's about it.
Uh, is anybody planning on going to Albany for the, for anything?
Nobody can make that, unless you, you wanna go?
I can't go.
It's, um, March twenty-eighth, I don't know what day that is, it's during the week, but nobody on the tree commission can go.
It's on a Thursday.
Thursday. Get free lunch, Wayne, would you like to go? Oh.
Thanks for the invite.
Okay. No, if anybody on the board wants to go, they, they can go.
All right. Website? Anybody got anything? Finance and controls? Nothing?
No.
Other business? We have received a letter from Adeline Malone's Law Firm, she is representing some folks that are apparently purchasing a piece of property at sixty-four sixty-three Montgomery Street. You know, past Rugies. And she represents prospective purchaser of the above-captured property, and we have a, uh, an easement through that property, and apparently, there's two easements. There's a permanent and a temporary, correct? And they're looking to get the temporary easement abandoned.
They're requesting that because they believe it was only there for the installation, however, when I read it, it says including here with the right to use a five-foot-wide temporary working easement on the easterly side of the, of the above-grant permanent easement. That would be up to the sewer department, but the way I read that, it wasn't just for the installation, if you have to go in and do any repairs, maintenance, whatever, you still have the ability, have that, utilize that easement area.
So basically, what it does, it gives us an extra five feet?
Gives you an extra five feet to work in.
Mm-hmm. You know, and I, I actually, I talked with-
five feet beyond the described permanent easement.
And then here it shows 0.046 acres easement right-of-way.
Which is the permanent easement.
What is it for?
It's where the wastewater main goes through the back of those properties, you know, up through night.
So there's five feet on one side or both sides? One side. It's on the easterly side of the reference permanent easement.
There's a permanent easement, then there's another five feet.
Right, so they can work on it in case something happens.
So the question is, is they're asking us to abandon the temporary easement. And I don't know what everybody else's feeling is, but I think we should say no to it.
You know, as a practical matter, we're never going to use, I mean, what's...
Well, if we had to go in there and dig it up.
Right. Chances are we won't, but what is she, they're just going to like make a lawn out of it, which is fine, they can just do that, we're not...
Well, it's probably already worn down.
Right.
Maybe they want to plant trees.
I mean, the easement's usually for the specific purpose that they need it for, which is very limited. We're not going to...
Yeah, it's up to the board.
We're not going to put a shed on it or anything.
I wouldn't do anything with it.
No, I'd leave it. Okay?
Well, law advisor.
Sure. Okay. Okay. Moving on to correspondence. There's no other business, right?
I had a few things for...
You got other business?
The Sprint amendment. We need to get this approved. Rich has looked it over, I looked it over, it looks good. We're going to get an extra $212.56 a month. Did you not see this? Did anyone?
I didn't see it.
So we could approve this the next couple of days if I get a copy, shoot a copy of this to you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought it was $400, or was it going to be $400 total?
$425, and we split it with Crown Castle.
Okay.
Because they operate the tower.
So the total is $425, we get half of that?
Right.
Okay.
And then I've got some correspondence from AT&amp;T Wireless. Now they're looking to expand their lease space, so stay tuned on that.
Cha-ching.
That's right. And...
Reach high, Brett, reach high.
Yeah, exactly. And then the hospital discussion. What's our next step with the hospital?
Well, we as a board have to decide how we want to proceed on it. You know, and the town has to decide how they want to proceed on it, and the school, and we're going to get back together.
Did you want to have a common meeting with the school board and the town?
Well, we're going to have another meeting with them, but we all as individual entities need to decide how we feel we should proceed. And then we're going to all get back together again.
Can we put this on the agenda for Thursday? What's Thursday's budget?
Thursday's budget?
We could probably do it tomorrow, because I don't think tomorrow's meeting is going to take a long time, maybe a half hour, maybe a little bit longer.
I have a meeting at eight, like 8:15, so I have to be done with whatever our business is by then, because I have to meet with the chief, so...
Yeah, we're going to be 6 o'clock.
So either tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay, then I'll get the Sprint deal to you guys, and then we'll talk about the hospital too.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. No other business?
Well, Brant was questioning me about this road we're going to dedicate, but we said we're going to do that after the winter was over, right?
Right, it's going to be May 1st. Anthony was going to cut...
Yeah, I forgot about that.
David Silver was in agreement.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
We had already approved that. And there were some conditions, they had to agree to the terms.
Right, that's right.
Yeah.
Oh, I'd like to go to an executive session tomorrow night too.
Thursday night.
Thursday, okay.
Okay. As far as the panda representative, David Miller had expressed an interest. He had sent a letter. I had also received a phone call from a gentleman that lives over on South Street, and I called him, I think, I was in the office over the weekend, Saturday or Sunday, and I called and left a message for him to submit a letter of interest and a resume. So, you know, at this time, I'm going to say, let's wait a little bit until we see if that other letter of interest comes in. But David has submitted a letter. All right, other correspondence. Last year, we had done this, and this, they're asking us again. This is Alice Plotnick and Deirdre Fisher. They are co-founders of a group, and it's a Parkinson's Awareness Month proclamation. Dear Mayor Reardon, we are writing on behalf of the Parkinson Support Group in Reinbeck, of which we are co-founders. We respectfully request that you join the US Senate that each year declares April as Worldwide Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. We have attached a proclamation template, which you can fill in or copy onto your own document and sign. So I would make a motion to approve that we pass this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I lost my father to Parkinson's, so I definitely support it.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Test it out, Howie. Put your address so they can send you the bill.
What is it, 76 East Market Street?
Somebody else, I, you signed it there too. I think they're looking for two. Here's the return. Okay, moving on with more correspondence. Apparently, we are, Howie, you must know about, this is something that was sent to the tree commission.
Right, we have to...
For the New York State Urban Forestry Council.
Right.
$100 dues.
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we renew our membership for the Urban Forestry Council in New York State for $100.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. February 12th, additions, emissions, or corrections?
I'll make the...
Motion to approve?
Second. Make a motion we approve as submitted?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. February 13th, additions, emissions, corrections? Had we gone over that one yet, Lisa? No, I don't think you and I had talked about that one. I think that will be sent to you later.
I sent...
Couple of questions I had under other business. As far as the panda representative for the village, it said we will post on the website. Did we ever do that?
I believe we did.
Yeah? We'll have to check that.
Yeah.
All right, and then in the next line, next paragraph down, it says, "Young Americans", and I believe I should say, "Young Reinbeck"?
It should.
And that you guys approved that last month when I wasn't here. That was them coming up here and using this building. Okay.
Right.
Okay, young Reinbeck.
Okay, and then we have, I can give you this if you want. I can give you this with the corrections on it. It says, "Reinbeck Commons Road Dedication. The board will accept a dedication at the meeting in March to be in effect April..."
First.
Well, here, I think it says April 12th. But at any rate, it's May 1st, which we changed it to.
Okay.
All right. And there was a couple of spelling things, typos.
Okay.
And then there was something, "Event Steering Committee Report. Mayor Reardon will speak to Andrew Amparati because they are seeking grant money." I have no idea what that means.
But it was because of the, for their schedule, because it depends on how much and how quickly they want to get it done, because they're trying to, they're trying to get grant money for the village, for the museum village.
Oh, oh, for moving the...
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with the Event Steering Committee report, though. Okay, all right.
No, just that it was...
That just clarifies it, all right. All right, and, yeah, a couple other minor changes. I'll go over with you, Lisa.
Okay.
All right, and then there's a February, that one we got to approve. February 13th, motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And March 4th, second page, it says, "Trusty Sauer informed the board that we require grant funding in order to complete the projects," but that was under, we were talking about the street department budget.
Yes.
And we don't, we weren't talking about any grant funding for the street department. We were talking about spending CHIPS money.
CHIPS money, right.
So we can just strike that.
But you also talked about, rather than using all the CHIPS money to go for grant as well.
Right.
For the street department.
Yeah, but the project we were talking about was for CHIPS money.
Okay.
Yep. It's that whole comprehensive plan thing we're talking about that we'll have to get grant funds for. I'll go over those with you.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have for minutes. We need a motion to approve that one. That's the March 4th one. So, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. So when did you do all this work?
That's a hell of a lot of work you did there.
Sunday.
Sunday. That's a lot of work.
See how we spend our off days?
Like the mayor.
Nothing like a day off, he's coming to the village more than work. Okay, water and sewer adjustments?
I have four of them, actually two. One of them, we had a bust pipe in a unoccupied dwelling, and so we sent a bill for $140.40, and that was on Star Drive. We have three items where, actually, these are clerk errors where they didn't reset the account after, or they reset the account to zero after they added just a radio head, so that was not necessary. And so that is $33, an $83 adjustment, $36 adjustment, and $96 adjustment, so...
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the adjustments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Any other business? Vouchers are downstairs to be signed, right, Lisa?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Thank you, everybody.